Good evening. I now call the September 4, 2019 meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Ms. Mugler?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here. Please let the record reflect that all school board members are present, including our student liaison, Paul Karnick. We'll next move to invocation and I'll turn the mic over to our student representative, Mr. Karnick.
Thank you. Joining us tonight to give the invocation is Elisha Patrick, a fifth grade student from Burbank Elementary School. Take it away.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. Good evening, school board members, school leaders, school teachers, and community members. My name is Elisha Patrick and I'm a student from Burbank Elementary School. My teachers are Mrs. Nusant and Mrs. Finney. My parents' names are Mr. and Mrs. Edmund and Sarah Patrick. I have two brothers named Ethan and Ezra. I would like to talk about respected, respect, and fairness. Both are huge topics, and for the sake of time, I will be brief. When it comes to respect, you must be less, you must listen and speak gently. Even when you disagree, you can, you can disagree with someone and still respect, and still be respectful. You don't have to agree with everything and the other person has to say. When it comes to being fair, you should not pick sides. For example, when someone is arguing over something, you can be helpful and give solutions to the problem. The goal is to, for each person to feel like they've been respected at the end of the argument and to walk away with them heard, respected, and treated fairly. I would like to end with a poem, "Everybody Has A Name," by Gene Warren. Everybody has a name, some are different, some are the same, some are long, some are short. All are right, none are, all are right, none are wrong. I like my name, it's special to me. It's exactly who I want to be. Thank you.
Awesome job. I think there are lessons in that invocation that everybody can live by, and I think it's great that you shared them with us. Now, fifth grade just started, and what's your favorite subject?
It's between math and social studies.
I'm a big math guy myself, I'd have to admit it. What, what kind of things do you do outside of school?
Taekwondo and steel drums.
You know, I know some people in the Steel Drum Ensemble, that's really great. And, you know, steel drum, that's a totally different instrument. What do you want to be when you grow up?
I'm still thinking about it.
That's okay, thank you. The parents and family of Elisha Patrick, can you please stand? You may leave the school board whenever you please.
Thank you.
Elijah, thank you so much, and thank you to the parents of Elijah, and you've got other people here with you, Elijah, in support. You want to introduce them so they can stand as well?
Ms. I and... Dr. Harris.
Thank you again, and we wish you a very happy school year.
Bye.
Mm-hmm, bye-bye. And thank you, Mr. Karnick. The next item of business is item 1.03, Adoption of the Agenda. Do I hear motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve tonight's agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item will be recognitions, and for that, we'll call on our Executive Director for Public Relations and Marketing, Ms. Kelly Goral, and she will be assisted by school board member, Ms. Phyllis Henry.
So I'm a bit shorter than Ms. Henry. Well, thank you, Madam Chair Cherry, Vice Chair Kilgore, members of our school board, Superintendent Smith, and members of our Hampton School's family. Tonight, we have the opportunity to recognize two schools that received recognition this summer from the State Board of Education. Would representatives from Machen Elementary School and Tarant Middle School please come forward? Well, no, hold on, just administrators right now. She's very excited, as, as we are too. Dr. Crosby, Ms. Humble from Machen. We've got Tarant. All right, before we invite everyone up, I'm going to explain this recognition a little bit. So the State Board of Education, they recognized 235 schools for high student achievement or continuous improvement under the board's new exemplar performance school recognition program. So the exemplar performance school recognition program is aligned with the Board of Education's revised accreditation standards and replaces the Virginia Index of Performance Recognition Program, which is what they had used in the past. So the awards recognize schools that are exceeding state accreditation standards and schools that are making continuous improvement and improving the outcomes for students and narrowing achievement gaps. The recognized schools included 52 schools that earned the Board of Education Highest Achievement Award and 183 schools that earned the Board of Education Continuous Improvement Award. And we are proud to recognize Caesar Tarant Middle School and Luther W. Machen Elementary School, who were two of the 183 schools across the Commonwealth of Virginia to earn the Board of Education Continuous Improvement Award. So let's give them a round of applause. So specifically, to earn this award, the Continuous Improvement Award, a school must earn a state accreditation rating of accredited or accredited with conditions and meet at least one of the designated benchmarks for improved performance on accreditation-related school quality indicators, which is a mouthful, I know, but that means you've done a really, really good job. So we're going to congratulate them and...
And we, we have some goodies and we get everybody up here. But I really want, on behalf of Ms. Cherry and Mr. Kilgore and all the board and Dr. Smith, to congratulate you. We're going to get a report later on tonight about accreditation standards, and I thought I was pretty good at this game, but they change the stuff every year. And so, when people are meeting benchmarks for continuous improvement, you have to understand that they're following a moving target and improving. The standards got higher, the tests got harder, the tests changed, you figured out what this test was, they wrote a new one, and you have to get your kids ready for a different set of curricula, and, by the way, they raised the score, and, 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 and we've done it, and they keep improving. It takes commitment, it takes hard work, and it takes a certain amount of patience with the system you're dealing with. And they've done that, and we're very, very proud of you. So, who are we doing first? Machen first, okay. Machen, here, you, we get to hold this big, let me not put it upside down. Don't go away, just, just stay right there. You can be part of the potted plants over there. Machen, stand. Come on.
Yeah, sure, and Ms. Goral, I would ask members of the school board, this is a moment for us, that each of you would stand and join in. This is a wonderful opportunity to recognize Machen.
And the Executive Director for Machen, last year, Dr. Mason.
All right, one, two, three, Mustangs.
Mustangs!
All right, one, two, three, Bulldogs.
Bulldogs!
I don't know. Joey does.
I'm a Mustang star, a mighty Machen Mustang star. I'm safe, yeah, bubble gear, appropriate gear, respectful gear. I'm a Mustang star, a mighty Machen Mustang star. Oh, yes, I am.
Well, I think those are the best recognitions I've ever had. I don't even know how to finish that, but congratulations, that is just absolutely awesome. And Madam Chair, that concludes our recognition.
I can't think of a better way to conclude those recognitions. Let's give everybody a big hand. That was awesome. And congratulations again. Any comments from board members before we move on?
Well, I think the board needs to create a song. That's our tall order.
I think we, I think we do too. Board, is there consensus we need to create a song?
Well, there are a couple, a couple cheerleaders on the group, I know, and that would not be me.
Well, I think we need to sing and dance.
You know, learning should be fun, and it makes it, this job is hard, and it's a lot like work every day. But when you believe in your children, and you believe in each other, and you're determined to have fun doing it, that's when it happens. So congratulations again.
Absolutely, well said, Ms. Henry. Thanks again, everybody, and congratulations one more time. Next, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda, which is hard for me to do because all that singing's got me in the mood now, Dr. Smith. Okay, for the Consent Agenda, it consists of item 3.01, Personnel Report Number 19-17, 3.02, Minutes of the School Board Meeting of August 21st, 2019, and 3.03, Certification of the Closed Session of August 21st, 2019. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second. It has been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Henry that we approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is number four, Superintendent and Staff Reports, and I turn that over to our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Jeffrey Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. It is my pleasure to ask Ms. Kelly Goral to come forward, our Executive Director for Public Relations and Marketing, and she will certainly take the lead in terms of our first day, in terms of our school video. But let me just say, as Superintendent, it was an absolutely wonderful first day for the 2019-2020 school year, our first day. I want to thank our principals, all of the building administrators, and along with our teachers and support staff throughout the school division, and certainly our students and the families that we serve in the community at large for their continued support of Hampton City Public Schools and the great work that we're doing. And they certainly participated, many, many of our community organizations to support the successful opening of another school year. So we're excited, and so, Ms. Goral.
Yes, well, good evening again, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Kilgore, Superintendent Smith, our school board members, HCS staff and guests. I apologize, I do not have a song for you right now, but I do have a great presentation that includes some great music that our students used, as well as our staff. So, I have the pleasure of sharing with you tonight our exciting and successful school opening. The first part of tonight's presentation spotlights our Welcome Back campaign that took place last Thursday, August 29th, where for the second consecutive year, our HCS students representing our four high schools took over our official HCS Instagram page. Yes, we gave them access and they ran with it. As you know, HCS has a strong following on Facebook and Twitter, but as you have heard me say time and time again, these two social media platforms are dubbed as old people social media, and the young people in this room are probably laughing behind me and agreeing with my comment. So the reason for the Instagram takeover was to better reach our students, our young people, and it certainly did, as our four students helped bring excitement around going back to school and engaged many individuals. So representing, whoops, representing Hampton High was Robert Wheeler Hudson. Representing Bethel High School was Jalen Whitfield. Representing Thebus High School was Kenneth Ferguson. And representing Kickitane High School was Sierra Davis. As we did last year, our PR team met with these awesome young people prior to August 29th to go over that takeover. We brainstormed ideas, we went over hashtags, and we conducted a photo shoot, obviously here, great, great photos. They rolled up their sleeves, they jumped right in, and they did a fantastic job last Thursday. Collectively, they posted close to 50 photos, interviews, videos, and stories, which drew over 3,100 likes and nearly 32,600 views, and they grew our Instagram following by almost 200 followers in less than a day. So if I feel you would agree with me, that they were pretty successful. So great job. So the next several slides are a sampling of the great way they showcased their schools that day. So as you can see here, this is a slide from Thebus High School. It was showing our Academies of Hampton Student Ambassadors who were available to lend a helping hand during freshman orientation. This is also Thebus High School. Look at those happy faces of those new freshmen as they were getting ready to, to start their school year. Next, we have a picture from Bethel High School, where Jalen is trying out Bethel's Academy of Law and Public Safety's Emergency Simulator. Hopefully, she had a little bit more success than a certain school board chair who we'll rename nameless did when she drove it last year. Here's a post from Kickitane High School showing a few of our students already having some fun during freshman orientation. Here's another post from Kickitane High, showing our NJROTC officer explaining to a new cadet how great their program is. This picture's from Hampton High, showcasing a staff member, their librarian, Ms. Sexton. And then the next are some videos that they posted throughout the day, and again, this is just a sampling. So here we have our Kickitane cheerleaders. Then we have a little tri, oops, some senior crabbers, these are two senior crabbers, giving advice to the class of 2023.
I'm here with Jamir and Malik, and they're going to give you all some advice.
I would say, as a freshman, get a planner in your freshman year, make sure your GPA is high, because that will start you off for the rest of your high school career.
Make sure you always do your homework, because homework, even though homework is a small percentage, still...
So we're talking about doing homework and keeping a planner. Over at Bethel, we're playing some trivia.
Y'all, so it's trivia time, and I have a question for you. What is our freshman...
Over at Kickitane, our warriors are showing their moves during freshman orientation. We had some interviews, such as this one from Bethel with one of our teachers.
Hey, guys, I'm here with...
Ms. G, Spanish teacher at Bethel High School, the home of academic excellence.
Ms. G, how long have you been working here?
This will be year five.
And what is your favorite part about working at Bethel High?
Um, working with students and being able to help them be successful.
There you have it.
Then we have an interview out of Thebus.
Welcome to all of the new freshmen, class of 2023. I'm your freshman class sponsor, you're going to have the greatest time of your life at Thebus High School, I promise you.
Thebus also had a great compilation video that, that Kenneth put to music and did some animation, but it was a little over two minutes, so I encourage you to go on our Instagram page and check out that. And we're going to wrap up with a pep rally from Hampton High. I believe our own student rep may be part of that video.
Yeah.
So as I mentioned, this is just a sampling of the great posts that the students did last Thursday. If you missed out, they are still there, so please visit our Instagram page, which is Hampton underscore city underscore schools. And like I said, they grew 200 followers in less than a day and had almost 32,000 views. So they did a fantastic job. So I'd like to thank, actually, our high school principals, I don't believe that they're here this evening, but Ms. Pollard, Mr. Harris, Mr. Dorsey, and Mr. Saunders, who recommended these young people to be their leaders and their ambassadors. I'd like to thank Carolyn Bowers and Vicky Carper and Graphics for working with our students and prepping them and during the day. And I'd especially like to thank Jalen, Wheeler, Sierra, and Kenneth for participating. And we have two of them here today, we've got Kenneth and Sierra, if you all would stand for me. And as I mentioned, this was our second consecutive takeover. We did it last year for the first time, but I will say, and they even mentioned they were a little competitive, they wanted to be better than last year and they wanted to be better than each other. So there was a little bit of, you know, going back and forth as we were brainstorming, it was great, but they all absolutely blew it out of the water. So one more round of applause for that. And we're hoping to tap into them a little bit this year as they share more videos and pictures with us so that we can put those out on Instagram for our students to see. Next, we have our back-to-school video that our PEG TV staff has produced. The first part you may recognize a little bit as we pushed out a trailer on our social media platforms Monday evening welcoming everyone back to school. Additional footage was shot throughout the day yesterday at several of our buildings showing our smooth opening and the great teaching and learning going on in our schools. Yesterday's footage was added to that teaser to show a great reflection of Hampton City Schools and our first day of the year. So before the video starts, I'd like to recognize Mr. Andy Foley and the entire PEG TV staff for their work on this video. They did a fantastic job spotlighting Hampton City Schools and capturing the excitement around the first day of school. So if, at this time, can we play the video?
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Smith, Superintendent of Hampton City Schools, and it is my pleasure to welcome our students and family members, as well as our faculty and staff, to another exciting... exciting school year. I want you to know that in all that we do, that we recognize that you matter. It is about every child, every day, whatever it takes. Welcome to another exciting school year. Have a great school year, just know what, we got this. Have a great year.
Be kind to everyone.
Oh, oh my gosh, you're tall. Look at how high you are.
Have a great year.
Thank you very much.
Have a great year.
Yes, indeed.
Looking forward to an exciting school year. Just know, we got this.
Welcome back Hampton City Schools, have a great year.
We've got this. Absolutely, have a great year.
Thank you, Ms. Goral. I tell you, we have got everything going in the right direction in Hampton City Schools. That was so professionally done, it's amazing. As was the Instagram piece. You're the one from Bethel, Pumpkin?
No, no, I'm from Kickitahin.
Oh, Kickitahin, and you're from-
Phoebus.
Phoebus High School. So Bethel and Hampton were the other two students, and I can tell you that we are very excited for what you did, the fact that you wanted to do it, and that your principal selected you. They knew what they were doing, because you all knocked that out of the park, and we want to thank you for you even wanting to be a part of doing this kind of special event for Hampton City Schools. Are there any comments from board members at this time?
No, I just wanna think-
Yes, Mr. Carnes.
Sorry about that. I just wanna thank you myself as the student representative and as a student of Hampton City Schools. What you guys are doing is really great, and I hope for, I wish for your continued success this school year.
Great. Hearing it for one of your own. Any other comments from board members? Again, thank you, and Ms. Goral, thank you for what you do in the public relations office. You have really elevated it to a point where I think anybody on this board would put anybody up against you, and you would come up top, because you have done it in such a professional way. You've taken social media between you and Ms. Bowers, you guys have taken it to a new level, and we're just blessed to have both of you all working in that office in Hampton City Schools, as well as our PEG TV people, our graphics people. It's a big team, and it's a talented team, Dr. Smith.
It is.
And that truly is amazing. Thank you again, Dr. Smith.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and let me say that we would not have been able to have an exceptional school opening without the strong leadership of you as Chair, also with Vice Chair, and members of the school board as well. So thank you for your continued leadership and support of Hampton City Schools. At this time, we will have a staffing update, and ask Ms. Ruth, our Executive Director for Human Resources, to provide us with the update.
Good evening. More good news. We started this school year yesterday with 99.98% of our positions filled.
99.8?
Yep. We were still looking for two ROTC instructors at Phoebus High School, and we will have to add, based on student enrollment, probably in the neighborhood of three to four elementary positions. But right now, all of our classes are covered. We've got about 215 new teachers working with our students, and we're excited.
Wonderful. Any comments from board members?
Just to say, it's a hard job to get it all together, and you and your staff do a wonderful job of recruiting the very best teachers to Hampton City Schools, and we gotta find some Marines, and then we'll be ready, right?
Correct, correct. We do. Once a Marine, always a Marine, so if there are any Marines out there listening who have a desire to give back to the community, give me a call.
Yes, because it's been such a wonderful part of Phoebus High School for all of its history. The Marine Corps ROTC is a wonderful program, and we want to see it continue.
Absolutely. They are in good hands, for those of you who know Colonel Terry Gordon, who was the ROTC instructor at Bethel for a number of years. He is leading the program right now, so they are in good hands in terms of the ROTC background. But we would love to get a Marine over there before he recruits them all for the Army.
Thank you.
Mr. Samuels?
Great job, Ms. But, oh my God, my, Ms. Robin Ruth. I just lost my train, because I was like, thinking about, I need to get with you, because I need to borrow some of your strategies-
Okay.
-that you all use to recruit teachers for other programs in other areas. And so, I, it's amazing that you can start a, the school year at 99.8.
Nine eight.
Nine eight.
Nine eight. Don't slight me. 99.98.
99.98. So what does that 99.98 equates to? How many staff?
Well, it was 200, well, it, we have approximately 1,500 teachers, so that's 1,498.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yep, and I do have to say, we could not have done it without, uh-oh, Suzanne Marcela and Sarah Boone, who handled the staffing within the Human Resources Department, but also all of the administrators who spent all summer long interviewing and identifying the best candidates for their schools. It really was a collaborative effort, and everybody worked very hard. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. At this time, Dr. Cagiano will come forward and share a presentation on One Division, One Transformation: A Recipe for Student Success, as we continue to build from places of strength, and he will provide you with some of our current data as it relates to student achievement during the 2018-19 school year that will serve as the foundation for the accreditation dropout rate and on-time graduation rate for the 2019-2020 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Kilgore, members of the board. This time, if I could get some assistance, please, with the clicker. Thanks, Dr. Haynes. So September 26, September 26, at the end of the month, the State Board, Virginia Department of Education, will release the school accreditation ratings for the 2019-2020 school year. As you all are well aware, that is based on 2018-19 student achievement data. So for the purposes of this presentation, really twofold. The first will be to share some projections based on our internal data review of that student achievement data, and then the second piece of the presentations will highlight some of what we believe to be the contributing factors to what we see as a pattern of continued student success, particularly in reference to achievement results. So, the agenda for this evening, I'll, just a brief review, because now we're in year two of the new accreditation system throughout Virginia. And then we'll talk a little bit about the data, sum it up with some student achievement takeaways, and then lastly, again, some of those contributing factors, part of that recipe for success. So the accreditation system, I'm gonna go back and forth here a few times, so Dr. Haynes, stay with me. So for the accreditation system, if you look at this slide here where you see the asterisks, the asterisks represent those new school qual-, new school quality indicators with the revised revamped accreditation system. So when we look at elementary, middle, and high schools, all six indicators here are in play, and if we fast forward one slide, we'll see that these two additional indicators come in play when it talks about high school. So high schools are also held accountable for the GCI or the Graduation Completing Index, and then added to the new system, the dropout rate. So if we go back to the previous slide, if I were to highlight the English achievement, math achievement, and science achievement, those were all part of the previous system. And so when you look at the benchmark there in parentheses, if you look at English, the benchmark is 75%. That's the state expectation. Math is 70%. Achievement gaps, I'm sorry, science is 70% as well. So if we use math for an example in an elementary school, if you take all the boys and girls in grades three through five, three, four, and five, who take the assessment, those who pass and/or show demonstrated growth, based on the state's growth model, put those students in the numerator, those students who took the test in the denominator, you divide for the all-students group, and then that's how you come up with whether the school has met that school quality indicator or that particular benchmark. So the achievement gaps and the chronic gaps and tism, let me start there, and then we'll talk about the chronic absenteeism piece. So the state's definition of chronic absenteeism, again, is if a student is absent more than 10% of the year or greater. So if we talk about 180-day school calendar, once I have missed 19 days of school, the state deems me to be chronically absent. And so from a benchmark standpoint, if we subtract from 100 there, you see the 85, and so what the benchmark is, is the state does not want to see any more than 15% of a school's student population chronically absent. That's where that benchmark comes from. So that's new, again, the state looking to make a more comprehensive picture of school quality. And then the achievement gaps, if we go forward two slides, Dr. Haynes, right there, thank you. So the achievement gaps measure performance of the student groups, those groups there, you see, racial groups, disadvantaged students, students with disabilities. And what's interesting, unlike the federal system, the student groups, each individual student group, is held to the same standard, wherein in the federal system, they're a little bit different. So for example, students with disabilities, the bar of the expectation for reading is 75%. It's 75% for all students, it's 75% for economically disadvantaged students, it's 75% for students with disabilities. And what happens is the state looks at each, for report card purposes, they look at each one of those, and then, as it states there at the bottom, the combination of each group's rating yields an overall rating for the indicator. And we've got an example of that on the next slide. Alright, so on the next slide. So on this slide here, sample outcome for achievement gaps in English. You see each of those student groups I mentioned on the previous slide, and then what happens, based on the business rules, they derive at an overall indicator rating. So if we go back to that second slide where we talked about eight different indicators for middle, for high schools, six for elementary schools and middle schools, that one line at the bottom, the overall indicator line, factors into that school's accreditation rating and shows up on the report card. So there are some additional business rules here, but before we go there, I want to go one slide forward, and again, just a refresher for you all, you have seen this before, but it's important to highlight this before we go back to the achievement gaps piece. We'll start at the bottom here with Level 3, and so with the new, like a traffic light system, right? We've heard that from the state, that analogy, so Level 3 will start here, and so going back to the achievement gaps or the all-students school quality indicator, if it's 65% or below, it's a Level 3, and we'll talk about what that means for school accreditation rating purposes. If you move up here to Level 2, you see in the English column, a school could receive a late, a rating for Level 2 if the all-students group was in the 66% to 74% range, or for math and science, that's 66% to 69% range. What's also important here is this or here, and this is a bit confusing to some folks, but what this means is the state, again, in their new system, is giving schools credit for growth. And so what this says here, within the Level 3 range and decrease the failure rate by 10% from the previous school year. So an example would be, let's take the case of students with disabilities and reading. The year before, they had a 60% pass rate, students with disabilities. That means, right, the failure rate was 40%. So if we take 10% of the failure rate, that's four percentage points, so 60 plus four gets us 64 percentage points. So as long as the school scores 64 percentage points or higher, they get recognition credit for that growth, and so the rating assignment would then be a Level 2. So even though the overall score, let's say, was a 64.1 in this Level 3 range, they have earned the credit for growth purposes, so the rating would be a Level 2. For English, for Level 1, again, that benchmark, 75 or above, math and science, 70 or 70% above, and then that same rule applies, that reduction of the failure rate by 10%. So at this time, prior to going back, I want to make sure we don't have any clarifying questions on this, be happy to entertain any clarifying questions on this particular slide.
Any questions from board members so far? Okay, keep rolling.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Jerry. Alright, so we'll go back to the previous slide, Dr. Haynes. And so what happens, again, one advanced, that sample right there. So the business rules here state that just for the achievement gaps, again, they combine to calculate the kind of one overall rating. The state says it's acceptable to have one Level 3 rating for achievement gaps. So for example, if you were to look at the map of the state of Virginia, 120 school divisions, and you just isolated the student group of students with disabilities, and you just looked at reading, the map would be entirely red. The entire state of Virginia, there's not one division in the state of Virginia who right now has a 75% pass rate or higher for the subgroup of students with disabilities in reading. Different case in math. What you'll hear educators say is, it's okay, we appreciate the high expectation, and the air of accountability has certainly raised the bar for all students. And so with the business rules, if you have one Level 2 as indicated here, the overall rating for the achievement gap would still be a Level 1. If you had two Level 2s, it would still, it would actually move to a yellow Level 2, and so there's some different business rules that we won't go into detail. If the board wants additional information, we'd be happy to provide that, but in this example here, the prime reason for this is sharing is just that we derive, look at all the student group performance and derive at one overall indicator rating. Alright, we'll advance one more slide. So if we look at the sample report card, so this, this will be what the state will be releasing September 26th. And so we see a sample elementary and middle school report card on the left, the high school one on the right, and you again see the six school quality indicators on the left and the eight on the right. And so you see achievement gaps, which we just talked about, right? All that data aggregates into one rating for math, one for English, and there you have multiple Level 2s, so green and yellows, according to the state's new systems, are okay, and so that overall, a school would receive an accredited rating, fully accredited. For the sample high school, you cannot have one red and be a fully accredited school in the state of Virginia. So one red means that you are accredited with conditions regardless of the school quality indicator. In this particular example, it happens to be achievement gap. So greens and yellows will earn your school fully accredited status. Anything red on the six or the eight indicators will earn your school a status of accredited with conditions. So a deeper dive into the data, we mentioned the all-students group, and so here we have, again, all-students group for English, all-students math, and all-students for science. These were the indicators previously in the system, carry forward to the new system. Not too much change when you look at performance in English, you'll see a slight drop from 90% of our schools to 83% of our schools in a projected status rating of Level 1, which could still, overwhelming majority of our schools with a Level 1 rating in English we're projecting. For math and science, a lot to celebrate here, if you look at the 29 and the two goose eggs below it. So 100% of our schools have met or exceeded the Level 1 benchmark for math, and they have also met or exceeded that benchmark for science. Moving on to the next two indicators, the achievement gaps, this is achievement gaps English, and then the following slide will be math. What we've done here, and this gets back to the story I told earlier in reference to the state and performance of students with disabilities. So you see a slight drop here again, a majority of our schools, Level 2 status, as they are throughout the Commonwealth. Here, we did make a little progress, and one school last year denoted as Level 3 has moved up and closed some gaps with students with disabilities, and then we thought we'd like to also see the data kind of broken out by level. So there you have that same data, however, now looking at elementary school versus middle school versus high school. And again, the primarily, primarily when we look at that Level 2 assignment, it goes to the students with disabilities in reference to performance and reading. For math, the state changed standards last year, implemented new standards from an assessment standpoint, and as the article said in the Daily Press not too long ago, the state noticed gains throughout, when you look at the old test versus the new test. The Daily Press did point out that Hampton's gains, however, were noticeably higher than state averages, and that is reflected here with achievement gaps in addition to the all-students group performance. So you see quite a few schools, a large percentage, again, 41% of our schools at the end of this 17-18 school year, and at the end of the 18-19 school year, we're projecting 72% of our schools will have met Level 1 status in the area of math. A lot to celebrate on this slide as well, chronic absenteeism. 100% of our schools met or exceeded the state's expectations regarding chronic absenteeism. There are some additional business rules down at the bottom, and some I alluded to earlier, and I think the story here is a lot of hard work on the part of school administrators and teachers, and support from executive directors of school leadership, the support from Ms. Hatcher's office as well. When you think about the climate work done over the last several- When you think about the climate work done over the last several years, and students, and you look at the relationship and the emphasis on building a trusting climate, one of mutual respect, kids want to come to school in Hampton, and that is reflected here in this slide with chronic absenteeism. So, we're projecting one-hundred, one-hundred percent of our schools will have met this benchmark. So, earlier, I said for the high schools that the state holds them accountable for what's called the Graduation Completion Index, which you all are aware of. That number typically is a bit higher because, for example, that number factors in students earning a GED, for example. So, when the state reports out that number, that actually is going to be a little bit higher. So, a more conservative number, and a number we've often shared with the board over the years, has been the on-time graduation rate. So, those students really, this is, this is a real accurate picture, and those students who start high school and graduate in four years. And so, you see the notable progress made over the years, and based on our analysis, we are projecting that this trend continues in the right direction, and we will find out that number at September twenty-sixth, when the state releases that number as well. Actually, I believe this number is being pushed back to September thirtieth. Is that correct, Ms. Corle? On-time graduation, September thirtieth. Next slide, Dr. Haynes, please. So, the dropout rate, also trending in the positive direction, and this one, I believe, will actually be announced from the state on September twenty-sixth. But again, based on our data analyses, we're projecting that this also trends, continues to trend in the right direction. Last year, at the beginning of the year, when the state accreditation ratings came out, Hampton City Schools had overall accreditation rating of ninety-three percent. So, twenty-seven of our twenty-nine schools met or exceeded the state's benchmarks. We wanted to provide an update to the board based on our projected analyses for those two schools that did not meet the benchmark at the end of last year, Kraft Elementary and Hampton High School. So, the first slide here depicts Kraft Elementary performance, the middle column, at the end of the seventeen, eighteen school year, their results, and then what we're projecting at the end of the eighteen, nineteen school year. So, you can see quite a bit of growth there. A lot to celebrate, a lot of hard work, Dr. Haynes' leadership, working with the school administration team, school leadership team, lots of hard work from the teachers, lots of hard work from the students as well, and families. It was a total team effort. And so, based on that, you'll see, the report card we're projecting on the right, that they will have one level-two performance level assigned, and then the rest will be all level-one. So, very proud of the effort last year at Kraft. Next slide, Hampton High, very similar story. Again, team effort, very strategic approach to school improvement planning, and you look at the outcomes here. Dr. Woods doing an excellent job, leading the team last year, working closely with curriculum leaders as well, with Dr. Haynes, working with curriculum leaders, teachers, specialists, classroom teachers, and families. And here, moving again, we're projecting a rating of accredited for Hampton High School for the upcoming school year. So, again, data is still preliminary. When we go to the next slide, what we'll be looking to do is waiting for the state to verify, and so, on September twenty-sixth, we're looking forward to working with the state to release our final figures for state accreditation. However, again, we are projecting an increase over the previous school year. If you look at some takeaways, these just sum up some of the data slides that we had displayed earlier, and we can walk through these quickly, but what's highlighted in white there would be the school quality indicator. So, when we look at the all-students group for English, math, and science, you see what some of what our data analysis reveal, level-one or level-two for all of those. Moving on to the achievement gaps, again, looking at all schools. If you'll forward one slide, please, Dr. Haynes. Achievement gaps for English and math, again, projecting level-one or level-two, and then for chronic absenteeism. Chronic absenteeism, projecting level-one, and then graduation completion index and dropout rate, as the bar graphs depicted, looking for those to, the improvement trend to continue in a positive direction. Far as a recipe for success, we've shared some of this with the board as well, and as we reflect on the continued student achievement results and progress in Hampton City Schools, we attribute some of those gains to what you see on the next couple of slides here. So, the guaranteed and viable curriculum can't say enough about the work our teachers are doing to rewrite curriculum and to put resources in hands of, again, looking through the mind, the lens of a first-year teacher from a support standpoint, high-quality curriculum. Data-driven decision-making continues to happen. Maria Lopez, we'd like to recognize and thank her for her work on the Response to Intervention database. Certainly like to recognize and thank Linda Dietz for all of her work on the Student Achievement Game Plans website. The professional learning and the very comprehensive approach to professional learning, and the quality that is afforded to our staff. Systems approach as well. And then, on the next slide, instructional walkthroughs, technology integration, and a number of the resources available, the collaborative efforts, teams throughout the division, replication of best practices. When you look at these, you also keep in mind the superintendent's focus areas, and you'll see a direct correlation between a lot of those, a lot of those initiatives in our division, and they continue to be refined and honed over the last several years. Staff and students can't say enough about the work there and leadership. Leadership from the board, we appreciate the board's leadership and level of involvement, particularly in all things instruction. Dr. Smith and his leadership and vision over the last four years, and certainly the leadership of our executive directors, Dr. Donna Woods recently retired, Dr. Raymond Haynes, Dr. Anita Owens, members of the division leadership team, and as Dr. Smith alluded to earlier, the hard work of our building administrators. So, at this time, that's what we do attribute when we reflect as far as recipe for success. At this time, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you all might have in reference to some of the slides presented here this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Cagiano. Thank you so much. Are there questions from any board members? Yes, Mr. Samuelson.
Dr. C., great presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Samuelson.
And I don't have a question, I just want to make a comment, and as I make the comment, I'm going to look to my left to the superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith, and when we hired him in two thousand fourteen, Dr. Smith, you can remember that we were at forty-one percent accreditation, and I remember us having a conversation with you, and the statement and comment that you made, you said you have to own the data. Not only own it, you have to know it. And I just want to express my sincere appreciation for you coming on in two thousand fourteen and owning where we were, owning it, taking ownership of it, and now look at where we are. So, congratulations.
Make a joint comment. Thank you so much, Mr. Samuelson, and I can't say enough about the staff and the hard work of each member of the team. When we talk about the student database that we have in place, certainly, we have received comments from the Department of Education, from the Virginia Department of Education relative to the excellent student achievement database that we have. So, we are proud of the work of the entire team, and we cannot accomplish this work in isolation, but it is certainly a team effort, and I want to recognize all members of the team and say that we're grateful, and that we build from places of strength as a school division. We recognize the current realities and then also the desired results. At this particular point, with teachers and members of Dr. Cagiano's team for the Curriculum Instruction Assessment Team, we have been able to revise one hundred and eighty-three curricula, and that's very important, a lot of hands on deck, and along with our young people, our students, and the families that we serve in the community at large. So, just want to make that.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Any other comments about the information that has been presented by Dr. Cagiano from board members? Yes, Dr. May.
Just one quick comment. I just want to make, just give kudos when we look at the chronic absenteeism area, because I know that when the state came out with that new change in that absenteeism and attendance policy as it relates to accreditation, I know there were a lot of school divisions that had great concern in terms of where that would lead them, because when we, we know that if a student is not in school, they can't learn. So, I want to say, great job in terms of getting the students there and tracking that data, because I know there were some school divisions that were not even tracking attendance the way they should have been. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good point. Any other comments from board members? Yes, Ms. Mugler?
One question.
Yes.
What time on the twenty-sixth will the results be released?
It's a good question.
I want to be up.
Be back with you on that.
And out of the bed.
Dr. Smith, though, it just happens to be my birthday, so there's a lot to celebrate.
Oh, okay, great.
We'll look forward to celebrating. Any other comments? Yes, Dr. Woodhouse?
I would just like to say that, Dr. Cagiano, what a wonderful report on tonight. As you know, accreditation was one of my greatest concerns when I came on the board. Dr. Smith, Dr. Cagiano, and all of the members of your staff have done a wonderful job, and this is reflective of the hard work which you all have done in the last, I would say, four years, and so, my hat's off to all of you. I'm just proud to be a part of the Newport, I mean, the, not Newport, the Hampton City School System, and because we have done a great work here, and so, we've got a lot to be proud of. I'm like, Ms. Mugler, I'm going to be sitting up waiting for the report, but I almost in my heart feel like I already know what the report is going to be.
Thank you, Dr. Woodhouse.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from board members? Well, I know we have to wait for official notification, as we should, but I just want to say, when we talk about our strategic plan, and we talk about maximizing every student's achievement, in my opinion, that's what this is about. This underscores maximizing student achievement, and I think what you presented tonight, based on the hard work of the staff, the administration, and the students, I feel that this represents a milestone in our pursuit of excellence in Hampton City Schools, and for that, I take my hat off. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and I want to also say and conclude my remarks by saying that we cannot accomplish this important work on behalf of our young people and the families that we serve without the strong leadership of a school board, and so you are to be commended as a board. You get it, you understand the core business is that of teaching and learning, and so, the work that you're engaged in as it relates to the development of policies and the budget process, and certainly, all other aspects of your work. I want to say, Superintendent, that as members of the leadership team, we talk about the strong leadership of this school board, and that we're grateful to have such wonderful individuals who understand the mission of why we exist as a school board. So, thank you so very much, members of the board as well. With that, I think one final report, and we would ask Ms. Brittany Dorch to come forward, and she will give the financial report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Chair, Vice Chair Kilgore, school board members, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. It is my pleasure tonight to present the June twenty-nineteenth operating report. Just as a note, since this is June, this is a cumulative report, so the balances will be for the entire year. So, as of the end of June, we had ninety-nine point nine percent of our revenues, or two-hundred and four point nine million dollars of revenue that was received and earned. This was approximately one point four percent higher than the previous year, mainly due to increased state funds and local funds. Cumulative expenditures and encumbrances totaled two-hundred and two point six million dollars, and this is a point-five percent higher when compared to the previous year. An additional schedule has been provided in your report for fiscal year nineteen carry-forward funds, and these numbers are based on unaudited amounts, so in the event of any changes, they will be communicated, communicated to the board in a timely manner. And also included in your report are transfers to and from technology, as well as the cross-categorical transfers, transfers that the school board approved back in June. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Dorch. Any comments or questions from board members? Thank you for your work, and thanks for keeping on top of all of this for us as a school division. You do a great job, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, that concludes Superintendent and staff reports.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. And thanks again, Dr. Smith, for your leadership. On behalf of the board, I'm sure I can speak for each one of them. We are very excited to have you at the helm as a leader, and it's proven to be a very successful ride, and, you know, when you have successful things going on, things are positive, and you always want to be in a positive mode. It doesn't take a lot of indications or common sense, quite honestly, to be negative. But when you can be positive, that, I think, exudes positiveness, and I think that begets the other. So, I think that's one reason we're so successful in Hampton City Schools, because I know you talk about starting from places of strength, but I think we also start from places of being positive as well. And you've got a very positive division leadership team, and the teachers in the building are positive, and we just, we just real, we're just really excited about the fact that we can report these kinds of things, because every division cannot do this, and I think we're very blessed to be in a position that we can. Thanks again, and moving on to the next item. Item number five, hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. Ms. Bowers, I have received two. Have you received any additional ones?
No.
Okay, could you please read the protocol?
Yes. Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forums are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Speakers' comments on individuals, speakers' comment on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and/or defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period.
The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you. And before I call up the speakers, I would just like to add that on the form for the request to address the school board, it does say, when addressing the school board, adults shall identify themselves by name and residential address. Minors shall provide their name and/or, if applicable, their grade and school of attendance. My first speaker for tonight is Amika Abbott.
Amira?
Is that Amira?
Good afternoon, Hampton City School Board. My name is Amira Abbott, and I'm an eleventh grader from Phoebus High School. Dear Hampton City School Board, you like to say that we don't have a bullying problem in Hampton City Schools, but if that were true, I would not be here today. I have witnessed and experienced many acts of bullying since I was in grade school. I have been picked on, teased, hit, I have had bruises that have lasted for weeks and scars that have never healed properly. If we did not have a bullying problem, my best friend in sixth grade would still be here. If we did not have a bullying problem, the scars on not only my arms and legs, but many other children's arms, legs, and souls across this city would not be here. You say that we need to get thicker skin, but thick skin will not protect me from the blades that people hide on the bottom of their shoes, and neither have you. You say that this is how the world is, that you must learn to cope. I can try to cope as much as you want me to, and yet, I will still not be able to deal with the amount of mental abuse that I get every day just from going to school. I have had teachers and students alike tell me that I am not worth it. I have sat in a classroom with a teacher who purposely failed me because I was different, just like you have. I've had students take my pride flag, my bookbag, my cellphone, and throw it across the classroom. They've stepped on my things, yet we still don't have a bullying problem. I want you to go back through all the school records of the last seven years, the last fifty years, and tell me we don't have a bullying problem. I want you to look at my best friend who's in the hospital right now in the eyes and tell her to get thicker skin, because somebody punched her so hard in the middle of the hallway that she passed out, all because she had a gay pride pin. Thicker skin could not have stopped that. We can't just hang our heads and not be who we are to make sure other people don't get upset. You say speak up in class, ask questions, you'll never be wrong, but every time I answer a question and the answer is wrong, I get centered out, told that I should remember things from two years ago that I wasn't even in class for, and somehow, I'm stupid. When my teacher can't teach me the way she is supposed to teach me to where I actually learn in class, and when my teacher does not take notice- and when my teacher does not take notice to things that are happening to all the children in our classroom, there is a bullying problem. When students are going home early or have to fake an illness to be put on homebound because they cannot handle being in the same room or even the same school as these people, there's a bullying problem. We should not feel afraid to go to school every day. We should not fear for our own safety. The only thing we want from school is an education. That is all we ask for, a chance to be educated. But because of these people, these teachers, these students that we are forced to sit around, we cannot focus in class long enough to get the education that we need. Please tell me that there is no bullying problem, because I will be here time and time again to prove to you that there is. And next time, it won't be just me. I will bring the hundreds of other students in this city to stand and talk and tell their stories. So, please tell me there's not a bullying problem, because there most certainly is one. And whether or not you open your eyes enough to see it is something we here will not stand for any longer. Sincerely, we concern students of Hampton City Schools.
Thank you, Pam. Our next speaker is Brenda Marks.
Chairman, Chair, Board Members, Dr. Smith. I am Brenda Marks. I live at fifty-four Marina Road, and I have a daughter who attends fifth grade at Hunter B. Andrews, pre-K through eight. I am here tonight to discuss our, and I emphasize, our school division. I will acknowledge that Dr. Smith has had some pretty significant achievements with the high schools in our division. Those achievements have brought state and national accolades and large amounts of grant money to the division. That is to be commended. What should not be commended is that all those accolades and all that grant money has come at a cost to the elementary, middle, and special ed students who are out of the limelight. What is most troubling is that it appears that this board has been so blinded by the glare of the spotlight shining on Dr. Smith and the academies, you are not seeing what is happening to the division as a whole. And yes, that was a great report from Dr. Cacianno, but getting those numbers, that what cost to your children? What do I mean here? Here are a few examples. My daughter has at least seventeen medical providers from Norfolk to Henrico. Some CHKD, some not. Can you imagine my dismay when I attempt to discuss with them accommodations or suggestions for her in school, only to hear, "Good luck. You don't have to tell me about Hampton City Schools." These are professional people who have no children in this system. Their knowledge of the system is their dealings with the parents of children who attend our schools. You should read the comments of parents who are at their wits' end, attempting to get conditions to be such that their children can attend school, pleading for help to resolve issues they cannot. And I won't even go to why we can't get and keep good staff. Bullying is at epidemic proportions in the schools from elementary to high school. Having met with Dr. Cacianno, Ms. Hatcher, and other staff in the last two weeks, I have only now learned that Hampton City Schools has an anti-bullying policy that is a really good policy. The problem that exists is that the policy is not enforced throughout the actual school buildings consistently. Great policies without follow-through are useless. I can assure you that you are losing funding for every child that is pulled out to be homeschooled. And based upon my conversations with the few parents I have interacted with recently, the number one reason for homeschooling is bullying to their children. For the last six years, I have repeatedly stood before you, and I have begged, pled, and even threatened trying to get things to change. Tonight, I'm going to let you know that there is a new me, because I'm taking a new approach. I intend to assist every, and I mean Webster's dictionary definition of every, not this school division's definition, parent that reaches out and asks for help. I intend to assist parents in reaching out to state and local agencies to find a solution to their problems. Another parent and I, Kelly Berrios, have formed a Facebook page group for ha- parents of Hampton City School students. Hopefully, this board will remember that you worked for the taxpaying citizens who voted you into office and will return to being the board who responded when parents reached out to you for help and you in turn assisted that parent. Because until you do, I will also diligently campaign against any board member seated or seeking reelection who feels they have no obligation to the constituency that voted them into that chair. I will tell you, you don't know about the bullying, because I have asked, and y'all don't collect the numbers. But I was once told an old saying, "In the climb of the mountain of life, it's not the mountain that gets you, but the grain of sand in your shoe." As I have eight years remaining in this school system, because I do not plan on moving, I am telling you that until Hampton City School gets back to being the school system that I moved here for thirty-nine years ago, I am more than willing to accept the role of the grain of sand in your shoes. Thank you.
Ms. Bowers, do you have any more sheets signed up?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next item, item six, deliberation. It consists of item six point zero one, cell tower lease agreements for Baron Elementary School and Langley Elementary School. Six point zero two, revision of school board policies GBK, JFCG, and KO to back a free school division for staff, students, and visitors. Six point zero three, revision of school board policy GCCB, employment of family members. Six point zero four, revision of school board policy GCDA, effect of criminal conviction or found a complaint of child abuse and neglect. Six point zero five, revision of school board policy GAE, child abuse and neglect. Six point zero six, revision of school board policy KF, distribution of information and materials. And six point zero seven, review of school board policy KA- KA, goals for school-community relations. Do we have any questions from board members regarding any of these? What about six point zero one? Let's start with the cell tower lease agreements. Any questions from board members regarding that? Moving on to six point zero two, revision of school board policy GBK, JFCG, and KO. Six point zero three, policy GCCB. Six point zero four, policy GCDA. Six point zero five, policy GAE. Six point zero six, policy KF. Miss ma'am, Ms. Mugler.
Just, uh, just a question on, um, this distribution piece. We've started using, uh, is Peachtree for distributing, um, information electronically. It's not really captured here. Is it captured anywhere else in a policy yet?
I'll try to answer that question for you. That's just the- the mechanism that we use for the distribution. And so, the policy speaks to the policies around the distribution. But we didn't want it to indicate a certain distribution mechanism in that. The guidelines are also posted on our- our webpage as well, under the peach jar icon.
Okay.
So, there's in a policy, but-
Peach jar, I said Peachtree.
You were close enough. I knew exactly what you were asking about, Mrs. Mugler.
Yes, yes. Okay, so I guess just not to box us into one system who switched that along the way. That's why that's not in here. Okay, thank you.
And the last one, Ms. Bain, you might wanna stay just in case. Uh, any questions for policy KA, school-community relations? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Now, moving on to item seven, items for action. They include seven point zero one, minutes of the school board meeting of August seventh, twenty nineteen. Seven point zero two, certification of the closed session of August seventh, twenty nineteen. Seven point zero three, revision of school board policies BBFA and GBACB, conflicts of interest and disclosure of economic interests. Seven point zero four, revision of school board policy BDC, closed meetings. Seven point zero five, review of school board policy BDDF, voting method. Seven point zero six, revision of school board policy LC, charter schools. Seven point zero seven, revision of school board policy EB, school crisis, emergency management, and medical emergency response plan. Seven point zero eight, revision of school board policy EBCB, safety drills. Seven point zero nine, revision of school board policy EBB, threat assessment teams. And seven point one zero, revision of school board policy FEG, construction planning.
Madam Chair, I, uh, suggest that we combine item seven point zero one and seven point zero two. And I move that we approve the minutes of the school board meeting of August seventh and the certification of the closed section- session of August seventh.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Mr. Samuels that we combine item seven point zero one and seven point zero two, which consists of school board meeting minutes for August seventh, as well as the certification of the closed session for August seventh, and that we vote on them together. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Epstein.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Is there a motion for item seven point zero three through seven point one zero? Is there a motion for item seven point zero three?
Madam Chair, move approval of action item seven point zero three through seven point one zero as a block.
Second.
Is that you, Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Okay. It has been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Mason that we approve for action seven point zero three through seven point one zero as a block. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to item eight, deliberation first read. Consists of eight point zero one, revision to school board policies KBA, requests and responses to inquiries under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and KBA dash F1, request for public records. Eight point zero two, revision of school board policy JO, student records. Eight point zero three, revision of school board policy KJ, advertising in the schools. Eight point zero four, revision of school board policy DL, payroll procedures and payday schedules. And eight point zero five, revision of school board policy EFB, free and reduced price food services. The first three, eight point zero one, eight point zero three, are Ms. Gore, and she is already at the podium.
Good evening, everyone. Um, KBA and KBA F1, um, together collectively, align language to Section two point two dash thirty-seven oh four of the Code of Virginia, based on VSBA updates. Specifically, we changed the language to say that requesters may need to provide verification of their legal name and address, and that identification does not necessarily have to be a photo ID. And you can see that on page one of KBA dash F1 with the new language, as well as page one on KBA. If you look at page two, again, we took out the language that it requests a photo ID, and they just have to provide their legal name and address as verification that they are a requester of a citizen of the Commonwealth or representative of a newspaper or magazine with circulation within the Commonwealth, as well as radio and television. Also, as far as KBA, page four, there was a recommended language change from VSBA number two. So, we have it as the five-day period begins on the first working day following the day the request is received by the division. And we struck and ends at the close of business on the fifth working day following the receipt of the request. So, it's just changing the language per VSBA. And then, on page five as well of that, we took out photo and the signature piece. Are there any questions on those two?
Any clarifying questions for Ms. Gore on that one? Okay.
Okay. Um, for student records, policy JO, this policy is updated to reflect the amendment of the Virginia Code twenty-two point one dash two eighty-seven point one by House Bill two four four nine and enactment of the Virginia Code twenty-two point one dash twenty-seven point nine three two by House Bill one nine nine seven. Basically, throughout this one, you can see that legislation was changed through the General Assembly in regards to student records. On page five, it talks about protective orders and orders prohibiting contact with a child and how a school principal who receives notice that a circuit court, general district court, juvenile and domestic relations district court, or magistrate, if they have issued a protective order, what they need to do. Also, on page twelve, for directory information, it talks about, um, releasing addresses and telephone numbers with written consent from a parent. They must opt in. That is for anyone externally that is asking for that directory information. If you are an employee of Hampton City Schools, you know, we are able to provide addresses to employees and so forth. We do not consider email addresses as directory information. We do not release that. Um, that was part of the legislation. Um, but we only do the phone numbers and the addresses. And an example of that would be like, uh, two-hundred-plus men, if they wanna send an invite. We have our yearbooks that want to do sittings for senior photos. Those are external, um, individuals that would request addresses to mail home things. So, we've put a process in place this year that's going home a new SBO form for parents to grant permission. Any questions on JO? Yes, ma'am?
Uh, we received the, um, phone call the other day that mentioned this policy.
Correct.
Have you gotten, um, an influx of parent response to that? Or not know- not in a position to know yet?
Not in a position to know yet. The forms just went home yesterday with all of our back-to-school information. Um, so, those will hopefully be coming back. They also, uh, parents also have the opportunity to use, um, ParentView to go in. And, um, I'm sorry, not ParentView, ParentPortal to go in and just simply click a yes that gives us permission to release addresses and phone numbers. So, we'll monitor that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Okay, Ms. Gore.
And then, I do believe I also have policy KJ, that's advertising in the schools. And this just is policy updated to reflect suggested VSBA changes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, Ms. Dorch, I think you're up for the final two. Thank you, Ms. Gore.
Good evening again. The first policy DL, payroll procedures and pay day schedules. Um, these are just some minor VSBA, um, recommendations for language changes. Then, the next policy, policy EFB, free and reduced price food services. Um, these are VSBA recommendations as well. Um, the largest change is adding that a web-based application is prominently displayed on our Food and Nutrition Services website. And paper applications are available as well upon request. And this is something that the division has already, um, been doing. Um, also, there, um, was a recommendation by VSBA to remove an administrative code, um, reference just based on the content of this policy.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Dorch on either policy DL or EFB? Thank you, Ms. Dorch. We appreciate it. Moving on to item number nine, information. The next meeting of the Hampton School Board will take place on Wednesday, September eighteenth, at the Rupert Sargent Building located at One Franklin Street in downtown Hampton. And that meeting will take place at six thirty PM. Is there any information item to come from the superintendent?
Uh, Madam Chair, no additional information from the superintendent.
Is there any additional information to come from school board members? Yes, Mr. Kilgore?
Um, I'd just like to say that, uh, the superintendent and the deputy superintendent and I have been visiting all the schools, um, on the first day for three years. And I wanted to give a shout-out to, uh, Dr. Bowling and all the operations staff, as well as the principal- a shout-out to Dr. Bowling and all the operations staff, as well as the principals and the teachers and the staff, and I know a bunch of volunteers, but yesterday, the schools looked the best I have ever seen them look on the first day, and I just wanted to compliment you on that.
Anything additional you'd like to say?
It really looked good, both inside, outside, in the classrooms. It was great.
Thank you. Any other information from board members? Yes, Paul.
We have some home football games coming up for various high schools in the division. On September 5, we have Bethel's home game versus Heritage High School. If anybody would like to attend, that's an excellent opportunity to support our student athletes at Bethel High School. On September 6, Kiketan High School has a game against Jamestown High School from Williamsburg. That is an excellent opportunity to support our student athletes from Kiketan High School. On September 7, at 12 o'clock PM, I believe it is, Hampton High School has a home game against Georgewith High School of Richmond. And again, that is one more opportunity to come out and support our student athletes.
Thank you, Paul, for keeping us updated on those opportunities as well, because sometimes they kind of get past us, so we appreciate that. I know several of us had talked about attending Friday's game, but we don't know if Mother Nature's going to get in the way, so Dr. Smith might want to talk about that just a little bit.
Yes, and just to share with members of the board and certainly those persons who are watching this evening, we forward it, or will be forwarding to members of our community and information to ask that they would stay connected with us relative to any potential cancellations relative to the weather. And so we will send information out tomorrow regarding any cancellations. And so we're asking our parents and members of the community to stay connected with us, and we will keep you informed. So that game may occur, or it may not, at this particular point in time, just because we have certainly weather conditions that we're still monitoring as we go forward.
Exactly. Could you come to the mic, Ms. Gore? Thank you.
So we were able to move Thursday's game? Okay.
Thursday's game, which was Heritage versus Bethel, has been rescheduled already. It will be held on Saturday at 6:00 PM at Darling. So for Saturday, we've got a 2:00 PM, which is that Georgewith versus Hampton, and then 6 o'clock is Heritage versus Bethel. So that game has been moved.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That occurred during the board meeting.
Now, that's called an update. Now, that's an update. Any other comments from board members? Any other information from board members? Yes, Dr. Mason?
Just a quick comment. Just want to say thank you to all of the teachers and building personnel who did an excellent job yesterday, but also, I really would like to thank the school bus drivers, because they do an amazing job of moving kids, especially on the first day, dealing with kids who probably have never been on a school bus before. So thank you to all of our transportation personnel for doing a great job of moving and shaking those kids around the division.
Good point. And we are really, in a good way in this school division, to have such dedicated bus drivers, because as you say, oftentimes, those are the first people that our little ones see when they leave mommy and daddy.
Yes.
So that's good. And you know about that, Dr. Mason, don't you?
Yes, I do.
Any other comments to come? Yes, Mr. Samuels?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Just to also acknowledge our Hampton City School staff for the outstanding work they do, especially Phillips Elementary School. On yesterday, they had a DJ welcoming the students, and it was just so fantastic. They were playing some high-energy music to welcome the students, and I really enjoyed all the pins that board members and faculties and staff were giving to students. In addition to that, the fact that we also received tremendous support from Hampton City Council. We had several city council members out welcoming our students on yesterday.
Yes, we did. Thank you. And I think it speaks volumes for our community, when so many people, like the city council, can get involved to be on hand early in the morning to welcome our students.
Absolutely.
We had, as you could see, we had members of the military there. You could see that from the video. We had members, students from Hampton University. At one of the schools, they actually had the pirate mascot. We had members of the Hampton Sheriff's Department, and on and on. And I think that speaks volumes that this community can wrap its arms around the children of Hampton City Schools, and for that, we're very thankful. Any other comments from board members? Hearing no more business to come before us. We stand adjourned.